Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the Monday, September 9th, 2019 Eden Prairie Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the free and republican republic of which we stand as one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business is our approval of the agenda for tonight. Does anybody have any comments on the agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion for approval. I move it. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Iyer and a second by Commissioner Weber. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from last meeting we had at the Planning Commission on Monday, August 26th, 2019. Anybody have any comments to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for that also.
I move approval of the minutes of August 26th, 2019.
Time's second on that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Higgins and a second by Commissioner De Sanctus. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to our first and only public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing for the address of 10197 Eden Prairie Road. It's a request for guide plan change from rural to low-density residential on 1.05 acres, a zoning district change from rural to R113.5 on 1.05 acres, and a MUSA boundary extension on 1.05 acres. We'll go in order of an applicant presentation this evening, and then we'll go to a staff report from Julie, and then we'll find out if anybody in our audience wants to say anything in a public hearing. So if you would approach the podium and give us your name and address, we'd appreciate it, and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission and city staff. My name is Perry Ryan. Address is 19655 Waterford Place in Excelsior. There we go, first one. Thank you, Julie. So as you said, the request is for a guide plan change, zoning district change, and MUSA boundary extension on our property at 10197. We are, we have submitted some detailed plans on the approximate location for a proposed structure. I'm not going to go through those details, but happy to answer any of those details. I'm just going to get into some of the background information, and just as a note, as staff noted in their report as well, that we are not seeking any variances on this proposal. Just a little bit of background information, our family has owned the property since 1998. We have always intended for it to be a one, single-family lot when the services become available. We hoped it wasn't going to take 20 or 21 years, but here we are, and we're happy and we're excited for it. We did receive approval back in 2012 for a driveway, and we did construct that driveway sometime in about 2013. One of the things, some of the people on the commission have seen this before here, but just as a reminder of what that rural district is, and some have called it kind of a holding district until such time the installation of the streets and utilities aren't in place. And so the next slide, we're really going to go into what's been happening with Eden Prairie Road. So Eden Prairie Road reconstruction, that first stage, kind of top right, as it goes to the north at the top of the hill there, was done approximately in 2012 as it fed Rita Ridge and some of the other developments, Ridge, Riley Creek. And now this second stage or south stage, which is shown before you, this is just kind of an excerpt of the plans from the city's consultant, SRF, actually began a little bit last fall with some of the remove of the trees, and then has been going through this year, and I think according to city staff is scheduled for substantial completion this fall. One of the things that I highlighted on this plan in yellow are the main line sewer and water lines constructed down to Flying Cloud. They also, of course, go then to the east towards the Lions Tap. And then as well, the little bit in green right there are the utility stubs, the sewer and water stubs to our property, which is shown there in kind of a tan color. And so those are well underway. The utility stubs are actually in. I think they were just last time I was out there finishing up the main line utilities, and then they've got the roadwork to complete. So those are, utilities are in place, not quite hooked up, not quite approved yet, but again, according to city staff, a substantial completion this fall. I'm just going to jump right into kind of, I'm kind of following through on the report here, bottom of page two, top of page three. I think some good points were brought up about the reasoning for the staff's recommendation. The municipal sanitary sewer and water will be available, and it decides to accommodate the additional home. And then one of the goals for the comp plan being to conserve and manage natural resources. This can be accomplished through existing regulations at time of development, and that really refers to at the time of building permit and accommodating the conditions that are put in there by staff and by the engineering department memo as well. So again, just the recommendation of approval then, as you go to the top of page three. Similarly, there we go. Similarly on zoning, although we did request for change in zoning to R113.5, that was just because we've always kind of talked about that really since 1998 or 99, but probably appropriately, as pointed out by city staff, the recommendation is to go R144, which of course is 44,000 square feet. I did point out on this slide here, as we did in our narrative, that the surrounding kind of larger lot, single-family, lots range from .5 acres to 1.5 acres, and you can see those labeled on this slide. And then of course, as you're likely aware, the Lions Tap property earlier this year gained approval through this body, the city council, the Met Council, for the guide plan change as well as the MUSA boundary extension. Whoops, sorry about that. I really, I appreciate the work that the staff has done. I've got nothing additional to add. I think they did a good, detailed job on it. I'm here to stand for any questions that you may have on the plans that we submitted. You know, some of the nutshell stuff is we've got a pretty, we kind of put a standard house in there to meet the setbacks. Again, no variances. We're showing about a 14% loss of trees, and the majority of the grading that we're doing is less than a three-to-one slope. There's a small bit that is at a two-to-one that could change, you know, upon the exact footprint that comes in for the building permit, maybe with a retaining wall, and you don't go over the three-to-one. But obviously, we'll meet those recommendations and conditions that the engineering department put forth, so without a standard for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Appreciate your presentation.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Ryan at this point in time? Commissioner De Sanctus?
Sir, I have several questions.
Yes.
You had said there'd be a 14% reduction of the mature trees.
Yes.
Could you elaborate a little bit on the species and what your plans would be to mitigate the loss?
Yes. Let me just pull that plan up. I didn't have a hard copy with me. They're shown on the plan that we submitted, C4, they are mainly, just a second, they are oak trees. You've got two 12-inch oaks listed as tree seven and eight on C4. And although we were proposing that the replacement, the replacement of that states that we need to have three trees based on the caliber inches of those, we did submit that we wanted to do those as arborvitae's, really for screening up front. I mean, the majority of the site is oak trees, except as you go down, you know, towards the Minnesota River Valley, there's some cedar trees. So I know that the ordinance does call for replacing trees in like-kind, but we just thought from a screening standpoint, I know we did work with city staff a little bit as the plans were getting to 100% on some additional screening there. We'd like some additional screening just from the headlights and the car traffic, so we did propose that those would be arborvitae's.
Secondly, as you well know, with climate change upon us, heavy rain events are more frequent. When you look at the lay of the land, the way it drains, do you anticipate needing to do any modifications in the way the land is sloped, graded, any in terms of construction materials, any other remedies that would forestall a mudslide or any other kind of unnatural event?
You know, we really don't, one of the things, you know, when they reconstructed Flying Cloud before we even purchased this lot in 98, there were some pretty steep slopes. If you take a look at our grading plan, even outside of our lot, they actually get even steeper yet. I remember when we purchased that property, it was quite steep to drive up there in my four-wheeler. But they did a tremendous job on stabilizing those slopes. It's pretty sandy, but there are some fines in there, and they stabilized that with some fiber blanket and the mixed seed that they use, and we would propose to do the same thing. And on our lot, on those steep slopes there, at least as long as we've owned it, there's not been any excess erosion as it goes down to Flying Cloud, and we don't have anything that reaches the steepness of what they've done there.
Thank you.
I am curious about the home that you're going to be planning to build. I know that at this point, you're just looking at the approval to get started, but is there any other thought that you have about the particular way in which you'd like that residential unit to lay there on the site?
You know, we showed a 50-by-50 pad, which is really typical, which is something even as the engineering department looked at it, that they did, that's very typical. I think it would be quite typical of what they're building on, on the lots that are kind of at the south end of Rita Ridge that Pulte did. You know, it'd be a walkout, a two-story walkout is my thought, and some of the folks that we've talked to that have some interest in it, and likely a three-car garage, so pretty standard for Eden Prairie, higher end.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else in the moment? Julie, would you like to take us through the staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as Mr. Ryan noted, they are requesting approval of a comp plan amendment to re-guide the property from rural to low-density residential, also to extend MUSA to the property, and to re-zone the property. The current guiding in the 2030 and the 2040 comprehensive plan is rural for this property, and approximately 6,000 square feet of this roughly one-acre lot is currently within the MUSA boundary, because as mentioned in the staff report in the late 90s, when the MUSA boundary was extended, it followed a topographic line rather than property boundary. So the way that topo line navigates that area of the city, it provides for approximately 6,000 square feet of Mr. Ryan's property to already be within the MUSA. So as stated by the applicant, staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan change to low-density residential, expansion of the MUSA line for the entire property, and staff is recommending that the property be rezoned to R144 rather than the R113.5. The logic behind that is the intention of the property owner is to develop the property as a single-family home. The R144 district has a minimum lot size of 44,000 square feet, which would not allow for any further subdivision of this property, because a large portion of this property is likely undevelopable because of the steep slopes, and that would all be analyzed, kind of moving forward to Commissioner De Sanctus's question about erosion. Erosion and stormwater would all be reviewed at the time of building permit review to ensure that it complies with the code, because as Mr. Ryan stated, he is not seeking any variances for this property. And so as staff recommended, the rezoning to R144 to address those issues, we shared that perspective with Mr. Ryan, and he was agreeable to that recommendation from the beginnings of our conversation. So staff is, as I said, recommending approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. As you can see in your staff report, there are some conditions that staff is proposing be attached to any approval, so that largely that's an education process, so that once the building permit comes in through that administrative review process, both city staff and the property owner are aware of the types of issues that we would need to evaluate further in order to ensure that those comp plan goals of maintaining that balance between development and preserving the natural areas are accomplished. So as I said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie. I have a couple of quick ones for you. I'm going to start at the bottom. As long as you've just mentioned your conditions of approval on those, they're numbered 1A through 1H, and then number two and number three. In the applicant's narrative versus your staff recommendations, there's a couple minor conflicts. I just want to make sure that if we ought to, if we make a motion for approval this evening, make sure that we add a condition or not to your recommendations. One is number 1F, the wetland determination report will be required. I read somewhere that it has already been determined that wetland determination will not be required. If you could verify that, and if we should amend that on our approval. And also on the next one, G, a tree inventory, tree replacement plan removal required to be replaced at a one-to-one ratio. I noticed in the applicant's plan, they used the 1.33 constant in their math, and I didn't know if that, if we should state the one-to-one ratio, or if that math has to be amended in this condition based on the math that they used.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, taking those questions in reverse order. The 1.33 replacement ratio is a former code requirement. That's no longer the constant. So prior to sending out the staff report, planning staff did confirm with Matt Born from Parks and Natural Resources as to how the tree replacement ratio would be calculated, and it would be calculated on a one-to-one ratio. So having an inaccuracy in the plan is not atypical. Development plans that come through sometimes inconsistently identify issues, and, you know, we work through those through the review process.
Thank you.
And then I apologize, your first question was...
The one above that had to do with the wetland determination report requirement. I think it was determined that there are no wetlands on the property, and that the determination report wasn't required?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the environmental resources coordinator did review the plans and has commented that we will need a wetland delineation report. Many times, even though there might not be a wetland on site, we still need to go through the process to check that box, to ensure that there is proper documentation that wetlands do not exist on the site. So it may come back with a negative finding, but it is a process that we need to go through.
Very good. Thank you. Question on the MUSA line policy that you stated about previously following contour lines, and did you suggest that now there's a change in policy where they ought to follow property lines instead, or is that just a circumstance of this application?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as you might recall, I believe all of you were likely seated members of the commission when the Peterson and Noterman properties recently came through with the comp plan, their MUSA extensions, comp plan amendment requests, and those did follow property lines, because at that time, of course, they did not have specific development plans in place. With regard to the late 1990s decision to follow a topographic line rather than property lines, I think that was a fairly robust conversation that occurred at that time, and there was a little bit of analysis that went into that in order to strike a balance between local policy and regional policy in order to get, it was roughly, I think, around 800 acres that was added to the MUSA. So in this case, by approaching MUSA expansions as this application does, as well as the Noterman and Peterson, it allows us to take a look at the specific site conditions of each individual property, rather than taking a broad-brush approach that maybe that topographic line analysis provided.
Okay. Thank you. And following up on that MUSA question then, also in the applicant's report, it's stated that the utilities that are going in Eden Prairie Road and Flying Cloud Drive have already put in the water and sanitary sewer stub into this property. That seems like it was getting the cart in front of the horse with regard to the MUSA line relocation. Was that something that we did on the entire project, we meaning this entire Flying Cloud Road, Eden Prairie Road Utility Improvement Project, in anticipation of lots like this being converted over to, within the MUSA boundary? And if so, then are there other lots similar to this and adjacent to it that would fall under the same category for future review? That was a loaded question, but...
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the, it's fairly typical when we put in a utility, main lines, lateral lines that we serve, we put services in where we think they're appropriate, or stubs for development. So when Eden Prairie Road was designed and approved, some of those, this property, as well as, there's another property in this area, as well as the Noterman rural area, were all provided some stubs of varying sizes, either individual service stubs or development stubs, so that we would not have to redig, dig up the road and connect in the future. So it was cheaper to put them in now than to try to put them in later and tear the road up to do it. So that's fairly typical. In this case, all the utility work that's being done out there is being done at the city's expense, and those services, if people do hook up to them, would be charged a service connection fee. That's in our code. And with the exception of Lions Tap, Lions Tap has an assessment for part of the lift station and some lateral service lines, but everyone else will be assessed that connection fee at the time of connection. Does that answer all of them, all your questions?
Not all my questions, but at least everything that I've asked so far.
Okay.[1337.72][1337.72](laughing) Fair enough.
Does, with this road alignment, the applicant showed us the phasing of the Eden Prairie Road alignment, and their plans indicate the road continuing on further west before turning back down south to meet Flying Cloud Road. So there's new lots created, I suspect, that have gone through a different plating process already perhaps, immediately west of Mr. Ryan's property. Could you just summarize how those properties have been established, or if they've been established, and especially how those utilities that are following the old road alignment are protected via easement or right-of-way?
Sure. If you could pull up the presentation with the drawing. Who's got the clicker to back that up?
You?
That one, right there.
Yep.
Thank you. The property to the west of the subject property listed on the, or shaded on the drawing there, that's, all of that is city-owned property, and there would be no development in that area. This section, the, I guess the parcel that's between the old alignment and the new alignment was actually a parcel that the city purchased from the Pulte development. And the other part to the west was dedicated as part of the Rita Ridge development. That was all preserved slope. So the reason we went down, the reason we went down the existing roadway was to shorten the distance for the utility lines, because the purpose of those utility lines, the primary purpose was to serve Lions Tap. Lions Tap had petitioned for sewer and water service a few years ago, about three years ago, and so there was a study done on how best to serve that site, that commercial site. So we looked at whether it made sense to come down Eden Prairie Road, to come down Spring Road. We could have done either one. So the decision at that time was to come down Eden Prairie Road to service Lions Tap. So if we would have went down the new alignment, we would have added probably 800 to 1,000 feet of extra utility lines we wouldn't need. So that's why we retained that existing right-of-way and put the utility lines down that corridor. And so there are, as you mentioned, as I kind of mentioned earlier, there are a couple extra services provided for parcels where we think they could subdivide in the future. This whole area, or at least this project area, are all basically rural undeveloped parcels. They all have some, or maybe a very little development potential, but we provided services to all those, what we thought would be potential lines, or I should say, potential lots in the future. So we provided them service connections.
Okay. So the applicant's western property line will abut city property?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And then I don't want to ask this on behalf of Commissioner De Sanctus, but in follow-up to his question about tree loss on the property when the applicant develops the single-family home, it's been demonstrated graphically that the city has asked for some kind of a temporary construction easement to construct the Eden Prairie Road improvements already, and you've re-graded his lot, at least on that north side where that line was shown, if not down at Flying Cloud Drive. I'm not sure of that also. In terms of the tree loss question that Commissioner De Sanctus asked, are there trees that have been banked and set aside for Mr. Ryan's lot to make up for any tree loss that you may have been, you may have removed? Or did you not have any tree loss on his site when you encroached onto his property?
The Eden Prairie Road project had quite a bit of tree loss as part of that project along that slope. So as part of the Eden Prairie Road project, we're putting in tree replacement, and what we do typically on private, on public projects, linear projects, is we do 30% replacement. So we've got trees that are planned along the slopes of Eden Prairie Road. There are some, I believe there's two or three, I think there might be three trees being planted in front of this property as part of the mitigation for the loss of trees on the property. We have purchased permanent and temporary easements from the applicant, and then there's a number of trees throughout that whole corridor that'll be placed. The trees that would be lost in addition to what we took out to build a home, that's what would be replaced one-to-one. So every, for every tree lost, there'd be one tree replaced.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. My last question is back to Julie. In terms of the applicant's willingness to change the zoning request from R113.5 to R144, is it okay for us to approve this action without any other special recognition legally of his change of application, if you will?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, a recommendation from the planning commission, since it is an advisory recommendation to the city council, I think your recommendation for a change to R144, consistent with staff's recommendation, would be appropriate. Of course, we will be clarifying with the city attorney for the actual ordinance approval as to ensure that we check all the boxes of what we need to do with regard to the original request being R113.5. But being that you're an advisory body, I think the recommendation will suffice.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? Yes?
I have some, two simple questions. I think the, I see there are stubs for the sewer and water close to the property. Do they have the enough capacity per se to connect to this home, you know, it's not, both the, both the lines have the capacity to do that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the service lines would be very adequate for a typical single-family home. There are, the main line is our typical, our minimum eight-inch sanitary sewer, which can typically serve a couple hundred properties, so there's plenty of capacity in the main lines, there's plenty of capacity in the lift station at the bottom of the hill down by Lions Tap, to serve every, everyone in the area.
Okay. The other question I have is based upon what Klima was saying before, is because of the lay of the land of the property, it's so steep and a significant portion of the land is unbuildable, so is it safe to build a single-family home in that property?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, so the conditions that you see listed in your staff report are intended... staff report are intended to address that as well as the analysis that Mr. Perry and city staff went through in determining an approximate location for a home. The plans that were submitted as a part of your packet identify the general area where the applicant would likely be able to build a home on the site in order to meet setbacks, providing a typical building envelope while still maintaining and preserving those steep, steeper areas of the property. As a part of a building permit review, in order to construct the home, a land alteration permit would be reviewed and there would be erosion control measures put in place. There would be slope analysis that occurs. All of that would occur at the time of the building permit review and be required to meet all of the city standards.
Other questions of staff from the commissioners at this point in time? Commissioner De Sanctus?
I have one question. One, the archaeological study of the property addressing the presence of any cultural resources given the proximity to the Minnesota River, Louisville Plain and the slopes where there have been archaeological relics extracted. This would then be your responsibility, Mr. Ryan, to subsidize that archaeological study? Is that correct?
I believe that is a condition at time of building permit, so it would be mine if I proceeded the building permit or a subsequent order. Yeah.
All right.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I would like to invite anybody in the audience, if they wish to approach the podium at this point in time with a question for the commission, they may. I don't see anyone in the audience, so seeing no one, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing from the commissioner.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Weber, second from Commissioner Higgins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is closed.
I would, excuse me?
Yes. Commissioner Weber?
I would move to recommend approval of the guide plan change from rural to low-density residential on 1.05 acres, a zoning district change from rural to R-144, and a Musa boundary extension on 1.05 acres based on plans stamped dated August 23, 2019, and the staff report dated September 5, 2019.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Weber. Can I have a second on that?
I will second Commissioner Weber's motion.
Second for Commissioner De Sanctus. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Good luck, Mr. Ryan.
Good luck. The next item that is on our agenda is the Costco fuel facility expansion. It has been a continued item already when we met last time and I understand that the applicant is requesting a continuance to September 9, 2019, further to address staff concerns. Julie, is there anything you would like to add to that before we look at that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to clarify that they are asking for a continuance to October 14th. Today's the 9th. So they're asking that it be continued to October 14th so that they can continue to work with staff and revise their plan accordingly.
Of course. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioners, any questions on that? How to entertain a motion on that continuance?
I'm moved to continue the public hearing on the Costco fuel facility expansion until October 14, 2019.
I second Commissioner Higgins' motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Higgins and a second from Commissioner De Sanctus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Do we have any planners' reports, Julie?
No, sir.
Any members' reports from the commissioners? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.